Ten inches above today. See, what I'm doing here now is when I open this one up, so high it is, I'm draining it down. By the end of the day, this should be like 16 inches below the wall. And there's a hard ditch, an arid ditch here, and there's like outfalls that come in. Once you get to a certain level, you'll see the water coming into the canals. And then when I get done, I gotta log it on the computer. What I do is I write the time I was here, when I inspected it, what I did, the water level, and the height. This was like 20.4 this morning, and it's almost up to 21. Plus-
Debbie, nobody's seen Debbie?
No, her car wasn't downstairs. It's your day to watch her, Thursday.
Good afternoon. Today is May 6, 2021. It's 4:00 PM, and we are in the city chambers. And I call this City Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Roll call for commissioners. We have Commissioner White, Mayor Luke, Vice Mayor Emmerich, Commissioner Langdon. Commissioner McNally is not here at this point. She may be coming in later. But we do have a quorum. We have Charter Officers, Assistant City-- I started to say Attorney-- Assistant City Manager Branco, City Attorney Slaton. We have City Clerk Taylor. And would you introduce your--
Recording Secretary Baker.
And she has just started.
Yes.
Recording Secretary. And then in the back, we have Chief Garrison for Police Department, I believe I saw him, and Chief Titus for the Fire Department. Thank you very much. At this point in time, if you don't mind, we'll stand. And Detective Cooper, if you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I get an approval for the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to approve the agenda as presented. Please go ahead and vote. And that passes four to zero. Onto public comment, Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
I have none.
Do we have any online comments that you could-- thank you very much. So we'll go on to Item 3, which is welcoming our new employees. Assistant City Manager, please.
I'd like to invite Christine McDate, HR Director, to come on down and welcome the new employees.
Hello, everyone. For the record, my name is Christine McDate. I'm the HR Director. It's my pleasure to stand before all of you today to formally welcome, introduce, and welcome some of our newest employees and members of our valuable team. When I call your name, if you'll just stand where you are. From the City Attorney's Office, we have Amy Dixon, Executive Assistant. From the City Manager, Kirsten Peterson, Market Research Analyst. We also have Cindy Starr, Service Desk Technician. From Finance, we have Heather Adamson, Staff Assistant 2. Tiffany Fowler, Accountant 3. From Parks, we have Bradley Baker, Groundskeeper 2. We also have Shelby Mendelson, Recreation Program Coordinator. From the Police Department, we have Eric Astavito, Network Technician. Patrick Van Ostrun, Police Officer Cadet. We have quite a few from Public Works today. We have William Carlson, Community Outreach Coordinator. Martin Cole, Equipment Operator 1. Keith Jamison, Equipment Operator 1. Eric Odrenick, Equipment Operator 1. Ryan Russetti, Equipment Operator 1. Isaiah Hargrove, Equipment Operator 2. And finally, we have Lester Shitikowski. I practiced that, that's why I'm giggling, I'm so sorry. Equipment Operator 2. Nicole really tries to help me before I get in here. And then finally, we have Frank DeCarlo, who is a mechanic 2. So welcome, everyone, and I wish you the best in all your new roles here. Thank you.
All right, now we're on to Proclamations and Recognitions. So Commissioner, if you'll head down below.
Okay. Which one is this for? National Public Works Week. Do we have any Public Works individuals down here? Looks like half the crowd.
Well, very possible.
Yes. I've been reading about that. No, just kidding. All right. Whereas, public services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as stormwater drainage, streets, highways, canal maintenance, solid waste collection, and fleet maintenance. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon efforts and skills of public work officials. And whereas, the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works Departments is materially influenced by employees' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas, the American Public Works Association has selected "Stronger Together" as the theme for the 2021 National Public Works Week. This year's theme challenges our members and their citizens to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live. By working together, the impact citizens and public works professionals can have on their communities is magnified and results in the ability to accomplish goals once thought unattainable. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through May 22, 2021, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you. This is an exciting time to recognize everything that the public works community does. And as such, I've asked a few of our staff, who actually are out in the field taking care of all the needs of the community, to just introduce themselves and say a bit of what they do. So Wes?
Hello, is this on? Okay. How are you today? My name is Wes Carter. I'm a supervisor with Northport. I'm in charge of residential support, which entails recycling, yard waste, collecting metal materials, and delivering the toast to the city. First, I'd like to say, this is the best city in the world to work for. I get to work alongside with every one of these individuals right here, and they are outstanding. I've been in the industry for almost 30 years, and I have yet to find a better crew of people to work with. That being said, I'd like to bring up one of the guys who works for me, solely with me from 8:30 to 5:00, Derek Nagabauer. I'm sure he has a couple things to say.
Didn't that thing say "Stronger Together"?
We're stronger together.
That's right.
I'm Derek Nagabauer. I work from 8:30 to 5:00, and I'm on commercial recycle right now. And then, when I get done with that, I will pick up or recover stuff that is after 3:00.
Good evening. I'm Michael Vork, Infrastructure Inspector. Been with the city for 19 years, day to day. Go out do new construction permits, inspections on new homes being built, commercial construction as well. As far as what we do at the city, road paving, I do inspection and processing of that. A lot of ditch digging. If it involves having contractors from-- private contractors come into the city and do work, I usually am overseeing that kind of work as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How's it ringing, Peter?
Hi, my name is Michelle Ross. I am Customer Service Representative 2. What we do in Customer Service is answer all the questions and take requests from citizens regarding a variety of subjects: solid waste, roads, drainage, streetlights, street signs, mowing and trimming of the right-ofways, and also waterway clearing, in an effort to keep the city safe and clean so residents can enjoy their community.
All right, thank you.
You get a lot of calls, too.
I don't know, Frank DeCarlo, Fleet Mechanic. Been working here for about six weeks for maintenance and repairs on all the equipment. Great company, great group of people. I'm enjoying it a lot.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Richard Van Acker. I'm Traffic Signal Tech and Electrician for Public Works. We maintain the 1,800 streetlights that are in the City of Northport, 29 intersections, all the way from Welland Park to Aberlin Road. And we handle all the calls that Michelle writes us to go out and take care of. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, I was waiting for them to come out. As we transition out from Public Works, let's get into the Emergency Medical Services. So I see them standing down in the wings.
Emergency Medical. Yes, come on down.
And here comes up the other half of the crowd. First off, before I get into reading this, I just want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you do. It's because of you, Northport is a safer community. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. All right. Whereas, Emergency Medical Services Week is May 16 through May 22, 2021, and EMS are a vital public service to the people and residents who live in or pass through Northport, Florida. And whereas, access to quality emergency care significantly improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, at scenes of accidents and natural disasters, in times of personal crisis and tragedy, they offer essential services and demonstrate strength and resilience. And whereas, embodying grit, compassion, and courage, our emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, 911 dispatchers, nurses, and physicians reflect a spirit of selflessness and care to their patients. And whereas, members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the people of Northport benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals and their unselfish dedication to Northport residents and visitors. And whereas, during COVID-19 pandemic, those in the EMS field are selflessly risking their own health to ensure the health and safety of others. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through May 22, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme "Ready for Today, Praying for Tomorrow," and encourage the community to observe this week by supporting your emergency medical services teams around the city of Northport. Thank you all so very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carl Benham, the EMS Chief with Northport Fire Rescue. It's always nice to be recognized for the job we do, for serving the public. And as everyone understands, you know, we do this because we want to help people. Over the last year or so, over about a year and a half, you know, we had to reevaluate a lot of how we performed our duties. You know, as everyone knows, COVID, it didn't just affect EMS services, but it affected everyone throughout the world. But our personnel, kudos to the men and women of not just Northport Fire Rescue, but all agencies, had to make a lot of changes. It was-- we'd go from a policy, two or three policies a day, something would come out on CDC, then we'd have to do another policy, or men and women. We all got overwhelmed sometimes, but they stepped up and they, you know, reviewed all the policies and everything they need to do to be safe. Even though, early on in COVID, for example, we didn't know what was going to happen or all that stuff, we still went out and did our job. And sometimes, you know, whether we had low amounts of PP, personal protective equipment or whatever. Like I said, it's nice to be recognized. We want to thank everyone for your support. And a lot of this, what we do, we can't do without the community's support. Even the people, you know, cardiac arrest, for example, there were save rates are going up. It's a team effort. You know, people doing CPR before we get there, members of the community, and the support from you guys are why we're successful for what we do. We do want to say thank you, everyone, for your support, and this means a lot to us. Recognize again for EMS Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think our mayor had some-- was very specific in giving these out, maybe. Who was going to read them? Because mine is Drinking Water Week, yes. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas, only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water, infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas, each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2 through May 8, 2021, as Drinking Water Week, and encourage each citizen and business to observe this important week by renewing our efforts to conserve water, protect our water sources from pollution, and maintain our home water systems in tip-top condition. All right. Is there anybody who's-- okay.
Pick this off so I don't sound too muffled. Thank you for this recognition on this and this proclamation. Safe drinking water is key. It's vital for the community. And it doesn't go unnoticed without hardworking staff, our treatment operators, and, you know, distribution techs that are out in the field day in and day out, that make this possible to have safe drinking water here in Northport. So thank you very much.
All right. Stay there. I think this is him too, right? I think you guys--
Reclaim?
Reuse.
Reuse?
So you guys just stay here.
Go back.
Yeah, go back. Okay. And to go along with that, this is Proclamation for Water Reuse Week. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas, although Florida's water supplies are finite, our community's population and need for water resources continues to increase. And whereas, water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources, which are essential to the health and well-being of our citizens, environment, and economy. And whereas, Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in Chapters 373 and 403, Florida statutes. And whereas, the State of Florida has declared the third week of May to be Water Reuse Week in Florida. And whereas, the City of Northport has joined the State of Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the Southwest Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water resources and infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas, the City of Northport has an award-winning water reuse system and encourages efficient and effective use of reclaimed water. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through May 22, 2021, as Water Reuse Week. And we encourage each citizen and business to help protect our precious water resources by practicing efficient and effective use of reclaimed water.
Well, like I said, the conservation measure is huge. And we are very lucky here in Northport that we are great stewards of the environment. We promote green. And it's a pleasure to work here and be in the environment that we are such environmentally friendly in this city. And conservation, it was mentioned in drinking water, it's mentioned in reuse. Any water we use is precious here in Florida and in Northport. And we just have to be aware of what we're using and how we're using it, and maximize our resources. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now we can do the handshakes. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Thanks for coming. Great job. Is anyone from the Building Department here? Come on down. I have a lot of whereses here, so I'm going to get started. Whereas, our City of Northport, Florida, is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends upon the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas, our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas, our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the world. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters, such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild land fires, floods, and earthquakes, which according to a FEMA commissioned study by the National Institute of Building Sciences, provide $11 in future mitigation benefits for every dollar invested. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Building Safety Month. What's coming up?
Whereses weren't the words. Carter saw the words.
Between the whereses.
My name's Josh Thurmer. I'm the Building Division Manager. And on behalf of our department, I just want to say that this month of building safety is a great reminder to all of us of the exact purpose of why we do what we do and why we have a building department. I actually wanted to share the purpose and intent of why we apply the Florida building codes, and explains directly from the code exactly why it is that we do that. The purpose of our codes is to establish the minimum requirements to provide a reasonable level of safety, public health, and general welfare through structural strength, means-of-egress facilities, stability, sanitation, adequate light and ventilation, energy conservation, and safety to life and property from fire and other hazards attributed to the built environment, and to provide a reasonable level of safety to firefighters and emergency responders during emergency operations. So during this month, we'll also take the time to remind all of our staff the importance of what we're doing and continue to serve the public. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They put hurricane preparedness, that you guys do? Same team?
Different team.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here from hurricane preparedness? Here we go.
I think they're prepared for this.
Here they come. I'll get started. Whereas National Hurricane Preparedness Week is May 9th through May 15th, 2021, and whereas hurricanes continue to pose a serious threat to the residents and businesses of the city of Northport, Florida, and hurricanes produce heavy winds, torrential rains, inland flooding, tornadoes, and continue to pose a serious threat to the residents and businesses of the city of Northport, Florida. And whereas hurricanes are most likely to occur between June 1st and November 30th. And whereas the 2020 season produced 30 named storms, of which 13 became hurricanes, including six major hurricanes, which is the most number of stores on record, surpassing the 28 from 2005, and the second highest number of hurricanes on record. And whereas it is important that all residents and businesses of the city of Northport, Florida, be aware of the dangers hurricanes present, and remain vigilant to lessen the loss of life and minimize property damage. And whereas people should maintain emergency supply kits to use at home and during an evacuation with enough non-perishable food and water to sustain family members and pets for at least three to seven days. Have a weather alert radio, know their evacuation routes, and comply with local authorities when asked to evacuate, and locations for official shelters. And whereas the medical needs program is designed to provide disaster-related evacuation assistance and care for those without other alternatives. Those who need transportation assistance to a shelter and/or have a health condition that requires medical attention in a shelter are encouraged to preregister through Sarasota County Emergency Management. And whereas the Florida Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, have joined together urging all citizens to prepare for hurricanes and to educate themselves on hurricane preparedness and safety strategies. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as Hurricane Preparedness Week, and urge everyone in our community to act now and make ready their families and homes, and stay alert.
Thank you very much. I'm Michael Ryan. I oversee the emergency management division within Fire Rescue. And over the past year, what we've learned from COVID-19 is it has changed our schedule in terms of what we do, has placed a lot of restrictions on where we can go, and reduced our ability to interact with one another. However, what it did not do, did not change the schedule of the hurricane season, did not restrict the storm's capability to impact us, and did not reduce our vulnerability to these storms. Therefore, even though in the midst of this unique year, we still need to be prepared. We still need to be ready. We still need to take those steps necessary. Regardless of COVID-19, we still have to prepare ourselves. So thank you very much for this proclamation, and we look forward to working with our community and get ourselves better prepared for this hurricane season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you do. You're awesome.
Well, look at all the little words on that one.
I didn't have a bunch of words under my whereas's.
You picked wisely.
The last proclamation, there's nobody here to receive it, but it is about Global Love Day. Today is also National Prayer Day, and that encompasses a lot of people praying, and I think it behooves us to pray for love on this day also. Whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., a nonprofit organization, has announced Global Love Day to facilitate in establishing love and peace on our planet. And whereas Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus towards unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves. And whereas we are one humanity on this planet, and whereas all life is interconnected and interdependent, and whereas all share in the universal bond of love, and whereas love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness, and whereas with respect and compassion, we embrace diversity, and whereas together we make a difference through love. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 1st, and might as well say every day after, as Global Love Day. Thank you very much. Now we have some certificates.
This is in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Environmental Advisory Board from September 22nd, 2020 through April 27th, 2021. Leon Hobbs, are you in the house? This is in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Public Utility Advisory Board from May 26th, 2020 through April 26th, 2021. Thank you both for your service.
Is Grace Pony here? All right. In recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from April 9th, 2019 through April 9th, 2021. How about Azure Heck? And I'm pronouncing these phonetically, so forgive me. In recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Art Advisory Board from September 8th, 2020 through April 7th, 2021. And Joseph Magorino?
Maserino.
Maserino, thank you. In recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Charter Review Advisory Board from November 20th, 2020 through April Terrell Carl? Certificate of Appreciation is hereby presented to Terrell Carl in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from January 2nd, 2019 through April 9th, 2021. Norbert Schneider? In recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Planning and Zoning Advisory Board from February 25th, 2020 through April 7th, 2021. Justin Willis, I don't see him in the house. Justin, in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Charter Review Advisory Board from March 28th, 2017 through April 23rd,
And to Vernna Blaine, in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Environmental Advisory Board from June 2nd, 2020 to April 23rd, 2021. Then also to Kim French, in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the city of Northport while serving on the Northport Community Economic Development Advisory Board from June 9th, 2020 through April 27th, 2021. Thank you very much.
Can I see you for five minutes after the meeting, please, before you leave? Thank you.
All right. Before I ask for a public comment, I'll just state that we have received an email from Commissioner McDowell, and she sends her apologies. She was not able to make the meeting. So do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything for the good of the order? It is 4:38, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.